Next article.
Article forty-nine.
Article twenty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, forty-nine. Article forty-nine.
That was forty-nine, right?
No.
Forty-nine.
The one that we just said is forty.
We're voting on, we're opening forty-nine now.
Right, forty-nine has just been announced.
All right, I'm moderator. Ball Mager, Twenty-Seven Cherry Street. Right now, we're looking to amend the current zoning for the marijuana.
Um, hang on one second. We need to get everything correct here. Article forty-nine needs, has to be moved and seconded. Oh, I'm sorry, you're the one who moved it?
Yes.
I'm sorry, my apologies. So, you, go ahead, speak to the art. And did I get a second, I guess? Because we still need to do that first, before I listen.
He made the motion.
He made the motion, but I still need a second. Thank, thank you. That was, okay, please, and, you've got to announce what it is. Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm losing my place.
Are we good, Ms. Moderator?
Uh, just checking to make sure, we should have a recommendation of the Finance Committee? Yes, first?
As of right now, the Finance Committee recommends to pass over.
Okay. Please speak to the articles.
Okay, we're looking to change the marijuana establishment zone for industrial only to industrial business. All right, right now, the way it's currently written, there's not many options we'd have for industrial zone in Halifax even operate a business like this. If we change it to industrial business, that's gonna open up a few more areas in town where a possible business could open up. And if, from everything I've been hearing, we need money brought into this town. We need money for the guy with the sidewalk a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I got it. This business right now, if, if we open up a dispensary in Halifax, the town can get three percent of all revenue. All revenue, guys. So, right now, the average daily sales of dispensaries in Massachusetts, and there's seventy of them, is thirty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars a day. So, just say that we're on the low end of twenty-five thousand dollars a day. That's nine million dollars a year. That's two-hundred and seventy thousand dollars that'll go to the town. Okay, that helps out everybody that's been looking for money in this room. That helps out the police department, that helps out with the, with the, you know, the roads that we were just talking about. It helps out with everything that everybody's been looking in this town. And not only with, you're not only with bringing in the money for the town, it creates fifteen to twenty quality jobs. And these jobs just aren't, you know, these could be careers for people. There's a lot of open buildings in town that we need to bring more businesses in. Uh, right now, right now, basically, we'd have to have a special permit from the town. We wouldn't be able to just go out there and just find a place and be able to just lease it. So, we'd have to go through the town regardless to even let us operate in town. Right now, there's dispensaries in Plymouth, there's dispensaries in Brockton, there's Rockland, there's Wareham. The people that would be shopping the dispensary are gonna be your neighbors, your friends, your coworkers, your family. It's gonna be this community. It's not gonna bring people from out of town. I just, it, it just seems like a no-brainer that we passed this today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, I need a recommendation of the Planning Board?
Alan Diaz, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board held a public hearing on this matter, and the vote was three to one not to recommend it. Basically, our business zones are residential zones also, and I think that was the sentiment, but the recommendation was three to one not to recommend.
Thank you, sir. Discussion questions?
Chris Wunowitz, One Twenty-Ninth Circuit Street. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to point out that if this was to pass, there's still other laws in our bylaws that would exclude it from almost all the business areas, because you can't have it from five hundred feet of property lines, of schools, playgrounds, and anywhere that has a liquor license. So, that would exclude all downtown and pretty much everywhere that's business. If you look on the zoning map, what's left over that on a map of zone business is really residential areas. So, basically, all you're doing is allowing it to move into a residential area.
Sir?
David Macio, Sixteen Tenth Ave. Uh, I'm all in favor for this as far as the revenue is concerned with this town. Are we, are we looking at a tasteful establishment that, I mean, we're not looking at ladies hanging out of trees or men doing anything. We're looking at something that's gonna be reasonable and, and work with the effects of the town, correct? So, we're gonna bring, we're potentially gonna bring in some revenue for this town, which is what we need. Because one of the points that he did make was that we have empty buildings in town, a lot of them. Does anybody know about how many we have? Roughly? Does every, has everybody seen some of these empty buildings that we have? We need to start putting some business in here. I'm all for small local business in this town. This is what this town represents. Let's get it done.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moderator from the Finance Committee?
Yes.
We apologize, we had a mix-up, so that's why we presented the pass over. And we just re-voted it so that Finance Committee can provide an actual recommendation. So, on a three to two vote, the Finance Committee does not recommend.
Three to two does not recommend. Thank you.
My name is, yeah, my name is Phil Solenzin, and I feel like this is gonna be something that's gonna be, um, just a growing, um, business idea. It's gonna hit, it's happening everywhere. I've been out to Wareham, and it's very organized, the way they run it, very decency. Anything that anyone's worrying about is just not a factor, and it will bring money into the town. You have people that live in the town that are driving to other towns and giving the money away. That's what's happening. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Sir?
Chris Wunowitz, One Twenty-Ninth Circuit Street. If you look at the zoning map, the majority of empty buildings are in, they would be in that excluded zone within the five hundred feet. So, again, it would only be in residential areas in the most part. Right now, it's currently allowed in industrial. I believe the town's already voted twice in the past to keep it in industrial, and there's multiple industrial areas. Uh, there's one even on the Plimpton line listed for sale right now. I believe that's where it should stay.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir.
The Board of Selectmen met prior to this meeting, and we discussed this article. And at that time, we had planned to recommend to pass over. I'm not sure exactly how everybody individually feels, but I think, I think there's still a lot of problems with it. I, I agree that it's gonna be extremely limited, and it will get into the neighborhood, the residential properties. It's a tough call, we always need revenue. I'm not sure this is exactly what we want.
Hold on one moment. Thank you, sorry tonight, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, Bob McCarthy, Sixteen Ten Mount Ponton Street. I truly don't understand what this is asking. Because we have voted already that we can have a dispensary in town. We voted that a couple years ago, right after the bill passed, which was down in the industrial area. So, I understand the guy from Circuit Street being upset because it's close to his house, but I don't understand what additional this is asking, because we already said we can have a dispensary in town.
Mr. Moderator, just to explain, the town is zoned in different areas. For instance, agricultural, residential, or business, or conservancy, or industrial. Each of those zones, various uses are allowed by right, allowed by special permit. They'll have to either go to the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals for a special permit, or they're not allowed at all. The proposed change is, right now, in the business district, you're not allowed to have recreational marijuana facilities. That includes cultivation, manufacturing, and retail establishments in the commercial or business zone. The proposed change is to allow it in that zone by special permit. Anybody who wanted to operate such a business would need to go to the Planning Board for site plan review and for a special permit. There'd be public hearings, et cetera. So, that's the proposed change in the zoning bylaw.
So, we voted, actually, we didn't even vote. It was right after the town voted to legalize marijuana, because they said it went through as a majority that we would legalize it. It went through the actual state election, and the next time we came to town meeting, it was automatically set that it was gonna be at the industrial park. Now, because there's a dance school there, we're saying that, because there's children there, that these people can't open a dispensary. If, is that what I'm, I'm, I'm getting out of this, is that we said there's a certain area, and because another business set up in that area, after we said they could have their business, we're saying they can't?
Actually, as far as I know, there are two facilities in that area. There's a childcare facility and, as the dance studio. My memory, and it might very easily be off, is that one or both of those were already present when the town voted on the recreational marijuana, and where we're gonna be allowing it and where we're not gonna be allowing it. Um, but that's what we voted, in terms of the bylaw, in that the language in the bylaw specifically outlines the restrictions as to whether this type of business can operate in a certain parcel in the industrial district. If the town wanted to make that change, if it wanted to loosen the restrictions on how far away a recreational marijuana facility could be from, for instance, a liquor store or from a childcare facility, it's a change that the town can vote in the bylaw. It'd have to, somebody else would have to bring in another article to another town meeting to make that change, but that's allowed. Right now, however, the statute is, in terms of our bylaw, specific as to how close a marijuana facility can be to those types of other venues.
All right. Number one, I don't smoke weed, so I don't care. But, I believe that we're, that we set, we designated an area, so I don't care what else is in that area. It was designated, let them open their business and bring some revenue in.
Thank you, sir.
David Macio, Sixteen Tenth Ave. So, the pharmacy that's at Stop &amp; Shop and, uh, the pharmacy at Walmart, right? Pretty close to some other stuff then. You know, I, I mean, if we're gonna start putting regulations on everything like this, let's just, let's just fold it up, okay? Because he's trying to bring in revenue, it'll help Charlie with his next raise, it'll help the, the, the raise for all our town workers, it'll help the, the counseling on aging, maybe get some more funding for the upgrades they want. So, maybe with how new this is, before we, we drag it along for the next ten years to figure out where we can put it, let's, let's figure out what we can do to help this guy so we can put something like this in place to start bringing in the revenue. Because, not for nothing, we, we don't need any more liquor stores, we don't need another Pep Boys or whatever is coming in, in town here. We don't even eat Dunkin' Donuts. We need some small-town business that, that will bring revenue.
Thank you, sir.
Two-hundred and seventy thousand potential into the town? On the low end, excuse me, let me put my mask on. In the low end, to get some more revenue in this town, that's a lot of money. There's some private road grading that we're looking at, right? We're wasting all sorts of time on that. Let's get something going here, come on, let's go, let's speed it up.
Mr. Moderator, Deb Wunowitz, Sixty-Sixth. Is there more than one industrial area in town? The only one that's ever mentioned is the one up in North Calhoun, but, I mean, north of town, but I think there's other areas that are actually industrial that do not have childcare facilities. And if it is moved to business industrial, exactly where are those areas that it could go? Because we do have multiple establishments that pour alcohol. My third question is, if I could get an explanation as to why the Finance Committee and the Planning Board voted not to recommend this article?
Try to get an answer for all of those things. So, as I understand it, the question of industrial areas, parks, more than the one?
Well, I'll take, I'll take at least the first one. Yes, there are a number of areas around town that are zoned industrial. For instance, mostly, if you're, I'm sorry to go back and geek out on this. If you remember a game program called Sim City, the classic way of putting industrial land in it was you put it out on the outskirts. Well, back when the town did its zoning back in the nineteen-sixties, that's what the town did. So, in fact, we put a lot of the industrial zone land on the outskirts of town, along the Middleborough Line or along the Plimpton, Plimpton Line, or for that matter, the East Bridgewater and Bridgewater Line. That's why you find, if you look at the map, those are where the areas are. Um, as far as the specific parcels where this would be allowed or not allowed, it would require a fair amount of analysis. If one of the previous speakers seems to have done that already, but I'm not gonna sit here and go through a parcel by parcel without the maps out and without knowing exactly where those other facilities, childcare or liquor stores, et cetera, are.
Thank you. You answered your question or you got other comments? Because I've still got some questions that were asked by the prior speaker. Was asked about the vote of both the Finance Committee and the Planning Board as to reasons why you voted against this article. You wanna start to?
Mr. Moderator?
Doesn't matter, whichever.
From the Finance Committee, um, we, we reported the vote, um, three-two. Um, so, if any of my colleagues want to present, I personally voted in favor, um, so I can only speak to that opinion. Um, but we did have a full discussion of this at a previous meeting. Um, we took a vote then without, um, we were at Quorum, but we didn't have the full membership, so we took another vote tonight, and the vote did come to three-two. So, if anyone else wants to talk about why they dissented, that's fine, but other than that, we wanted to report the split vote that we had.
Mr. Moderator, can I say one more thing?
Okay, let's, let's get the answer to the questions, please, first.
Okay.
Thank you.
You want to go for them?
Yep.
Alan Diaz, Planning Board. In the discussion that we had with the maker of the article, um, I think personally, some of the members were not opposed to the marijuana portion, it was just the location of it. I mean, most of our business areas are Route Fifty-Eight from the Hanson Town Line to the Route One-O-Six area and up and down Route One-O-Six. Those areas are pretty much developed. The, the fact that you have so much residential mixed in with the business, I think that's what triggered the vote from the Planning Board.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Just one more thing. I just, just to try to put a couple people at ease, we would not just be able to find a location and open up. We'd have to go in front of the town, the Board of Selectmen, the Planning Board, to get a special permit where residents could come in and, and voice their displeasure, or, it's just not something that's cut and dry. We don't even know if we would have a place in town to even open. So, it's not like we could open up next to your grandmom's house or something. We, we, it's totally up to the town people to have a conversation about it and to issue a special permit. So, it's, it's just not that cut and dry, guys.
Understood, thank you. Mr. Gaynor, do you have any indication of question or discussion there? I keep forgetting to turn to you.
Yes, we do, we have several people who want to speak.
Can we have one, yeah, can we have at least one of them?
Hi, Summer Schmeling, Thirty-two Indian Path Road. Can everybody hear me okay? Just two points I wanted to make. One already was made, that how severely restricted they, this business actually is if they want to open an industrial zone. And to the presenter of the article, he did just make the point that we do have to go through a special permitting process, and he can't just go throwing up a business. But I remember years ago, when I served on the Finance Committee, we had, we spent several thousand dollars as a town trying to do a study to figure out how we could lower our property taxes in this town and bring in more commercial revenue. And we basically were told, we can't do anything because we're in the middle of nowhere. We're in, we're like, don't have easy access from any highway, and now we have a business who wants to come here and bring revenue to this town, and I think it's fantastic. And I think we need to look at it from a financial perspective and realize that this is gonna move forward with or without Halifax. And they're just gonna go find somewhere else to put it up if we don't let it happen here. So, I think we need to kind of take a step back and look at that aspect of things.
Thank you. Gordon?
Gordon Andrews, Two Forty-four Elm Street. The Board of Selectmen didn't speak on this, so I'm speaking as a private citizen. So, I'm on the School Committee, the Chair of the School Committee, on the Board of Selectmen, and on Silver Lake. The number-one issue that the town faces is revenue every year. While I understand the issues, by allowing a business like this into the business district, I'm not opposed to it. I think you're, you're seeing these businesses pop up in other locations across the Commonwealth. There, there aren't the issues that have been associated that we thought we were going to see from this. Will there be some increased traffic in the beginning? Yes, I think so, because just like every other business in town that opens up, they get rushed. We saw that with, with one of the businesses that opened up in the past few weeks. I think you have a chance to expand the, the availability of the town to allow another business in. And I think with the Board, the Board of Selectmen has had numerous conversations with another marijuana producer that was gonna be off of River Street, and that was just gonna be a grow operation. The number of dollars for the town on that is not at the same level as a sales facility would bring in through the three percent revenue that we would see there, so I would ask the town would vote in favor of this.
Thank you, sir. Hang on one second. Mr. Gaynor, you had other speakers?
Yes, we do.
Why don't you have somebody? Thank you.
Allison Long, on One Eighty-Sixth Mount Ponton Street. I note that there is an area right at Fifty-Eight and One-O-Six that has been overrun and breaking down for ten years now, something like that, um, right across from Combs. And that would seem to me that's far enough away from most of the things you're talking about, that that area would be lovely to have that back in business again, instead of just disintegrating.
Thank you. In the back?
Okay.
You folks all waiting in the back? Yes, please?
Jill Ripley, One Thirty-Six, Plymouth Street. My opinion is that we have, we have plenty of places where you can get alcohol in this town. You have Harmony Liquors, which is right across from, from the condos, where there's all kinds of children, and, you know, what's the difference, alcohol or marijuana? I don't do either one, but we do need revenue. And, you know, from the amount of, um, alcohol containers and nips that I find on the side of the road every day when I walk, what is the difference? It's, you're, it's, you know, if you're old enough to drink or you're old enough to smoke pot, what is the difference? It's, it's one or the other. So, we're, we're screwing ourselves out of revenue that we could do a lot with.
Thank you. Yes, you, sir? In the middle, yep?
I just wanted to make a point that the proposer of this bill was saying that you'd still have to go through special zoning, get special permits. Even if he goes through all that, the other bylaws are still there, it would be excluded from the majority of all the business areas, and it would still end up in a residential area. A previous speaker said, I was opposed to this because I live near an industrial area. I'm not against it in the industrial area. There's multiple industrial areas that he can buy some land, put a building up, and open it up and have a business. He keeps bringing up the one industrial area with a daycare, making it seem like he's excluded from all the other places. There's multiple other places he can still do in industrial areas.
Thank you. Hang on one second. Mr. Gaynor, anyone else over there still?
Yes, we do, we have, they would like to speak.
Hi, Pam Angstrom, Sixty-Five Pond Street. Um, I just wanted to say that, um, I am for this. I have my medical card. A lot of people gave up their medical cards when recreational came around, um, and so I take my business over to Hanover, and I would love to drop my medical card and be able to spend my money in my town and support my town. And, um, you know, as it was mentioned, they're still gonna need a special permit once they find a location, so the town still has plenty of time to, you know, say whether they agree with the location that's chosen or not. So, I think we should at least move forward with this piece of it, and then we can move forward once, uh, it's time for the special permit. Thank you.
Thank you. In the back, hang on, in the back?
Ashley DeSessa, Seventeen Ryder's Way. I just had two questions. One, do you have a specific location you're looking at? And two, financially speaking, I do see where the revenue can come in, but have you done any research? I'm sure you have numbers of what it would cost our town, and maybe more police or security or traffic or anything like that to offset the numbers you're saying would bring incidents.
Moderator, we'd have to produce a traffic study and an impact on the town itself during this whole process with the special permit. So, everything is gonna be full disclosure, full transparency, everybody can see the information that they need. Um, we're not trying to hide nothing. Two-hundred and seventy thousand dollars to the town, guys, could solve a lot of these problems that people are talking about.
Are there any other new points to be raised?
Cut through the microphone.
Right in the front.
What's that? Yeah. Any other? I'm sorry, sir. Yep.
Yes, Mr. Moderator, Dick Wright, Brandeis Circle. Uh, we made provisions for this, uh, business to go into town. I think the last thing we need right now is us to be jammed down our throat in our own neighborhoods. Uh, we have, I realize that Halifax voted overwhelmingly to, uh, pass the marijuana law. We made provisions in town to have a dispensary. Now, I don't think we have to have it in every single neighborhood. That's my opinion.
Thank you, sir.
You have to come to the microphone.
Sir, go to the mic.
You gotta come to the mics if you're gonna be talking. Yep. Go ahead.
David Macio, Sixteen Tenth Ave. Can we move the vote, please?
Thank you.
Uh, when, I see no indication of other discussion. Mr. Macio? Yes, sir?
Tom Manning, Ten Second More Drive. We're talking, everything's positive about this bill so far, but nobody's talking about maybe the detox center you're gonna be opening up in about five years. And how, and how many police officers, how many people were arrested in the town border, within our confines of this town, in the last twelve months? Not necessarily for marijuana, but drunken drivers, they had methadone, they had marijuana, they had whatever. Because what, the good, you get the good, nobody's, no, nobody's talking about the bad. And I'm, and this bill is gonna be passed in this town, and everybody knows it. You can tell already, it's going to be passed. Whether you like it or not, it's gonna go to town vote, and, and you're gonna see probably a seventy-five, eighty percent positive vote on that, on marijuana.
I, I think, I think we'll, we'll find out whether they'll vote for this piece of it.
Yes, and what's also important is, if it is passed, it's important that you dedicate the money that comes in. Don't let people take that two-hundred and seventy, and that two-hundred and seventy is, oh, that's the big number. Maybe it's gonna be a lot lower, but that money has to be dedicated to maybe one, maybe two places all the time, and the town has to vote on it. You need a two-thirds majority, maybe? If you're gonna change where those monies are going, the town should have a, the townspeople should have a great say, because, uh, that's, it's such a big pie, a piece of pie.
Okay, sir, just, just, just to clarify and to move things forward, are you for this article or against it?
I'm gonna vote for it.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make clear. Mr. Gaynor?
Yes, we have a lady who'd like to speak today.
Kimberly King, Six-Six-eight Plymouth Street. Um, I just want to say that passing this to industrial business would allow for that little gray building on Plymouth Street between the power company and the storage unit across from the recycling center at a angle there to be occupied and leased, so we'd be helping the landlord and we'd be bringing revenue to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. The easiest thing of the night, and I'm missing, I'm sorry.
Can you hear me okay? Yeah. Michelle Barclay, 202 Hudson Street. We've talked a lot about taxes and how much revenue it would bring to town, which I agree with. And I don't, I don't smoke, but I can't imagine being sick and having to drive two or three towns over to get to my medication. I can go up the street and get any medication I need from a number of pharmacies. And there are people who have migraine headaches, who have nausea from cancer treatment, and they have to drive several towns away to get their medication. So I think it's compassionate to remove as many roadblocks as we can to opening up a dispensary in town.
Thank you. Indication, yes?
Jamie Stale Clyde, Old Boswell. I have a friend that's getting involved in this in a different state. And I can tell you the traffic is gonna be crazy. If you go to the casino in Tibbetson, it's right on the Far River Line. That dispensary is packed with lines down the street, around the building. They need a detail office to be there every night of the week. I have nothing against pot. I don't smoke it, wish I could. But I live in a neighborhood that is abutting 106. And the way the traffic is now, just on a business, regular business day, it's very hot getting in and out of my neighborhood. So if you live on 106 either end, and there's a dispensary either west on 106 or you go east on 106, it all gets congested, and it's just gonna be a nightmare for traffic. So my question is, are they going to be hiring people to control the traffic when the people are coming into town? And my yard is basically right on 106, so I have nothing against any new businesses coming in. Yeah, we can use the money, but I have to live here. And I have five children and grandchildren. And it's already a nightmare with the traffic for the little businesses we have in town.
Mr. Moderator, could I just actually answer her questions?
Can, can you try again?
Robert Make it, 27 Cherry Street.
Yeah, thank you.
Just to try to ease people's tensions, there's dispensaries in every town around us. So the people that are gonna be, the customers coming into dispensary are gonna be your neighbors, your families, your friends. Yeah. And we are definitely, there'll be security, there'll be details, all that will be taken care of with the special permit and all that stuff, so. Yeah, no, I just, I just didn't want you, I just didn't want you guys to think there's people coming from all these cities around us, which is definitely not gonna happen, because they're already all around us. It's just us.
Thank you. Mr. Gaynor, any other indication of discussion there?
No, sir, no further indication.
I got one. Bob McCarthy.
Hold on, hold on.
Born and raised in this town, and I say, put that dispensary in.
Sir, sir. Thank you. You're not gonna go by protocol, we're not gonna recognize that. All right, any other discussion? This is requiring a two-thirds vote, the article. I am going to ask for a count, just to be clear about this. So I'm gonna ask our accounters to come forward. Okay, those who are in favor of Article 49, please raise your green cards, keep them raised high, only your green cards. Thank you, keep them up. Okay, all of those who are opposed to Article 49, please raise your red card and only your red card and hold it high, please. Thank you. Mr. Gaynor, what do you have for a count, please?
We have 19 in favor and 10 opposed.
Okay, the vote was 83 in favor and 35 opposed. That is above the two-thirds, the Article 49 passes. Normally, we don't clap or boo or anything like that, but I have to, I have to admit that I have been doing everything I can to say honest to goodness I never inhaled during this conversation. I'm glad we got passed. And next article, please.
Article 22.
Article 22.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, sir, Mr. Garen. Is that you, to the, close to the mic?
I moved the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $14,000 to purchase a 2016 Harley-Davidson motorcycle, currently being leased by the Halifax Police Department to include the current equipment installed on the motorcycle.
Second.
Article 22 has been moved and seconded. What's the recommendation of the Finance Committee, please?
The Finance Committee does not recommend.
The Finance Committee does not recommend. Speaking to the article?
Help us please to speak to the article.
Chief?
Good evening, Chief Sharps, Police Department. So basically, right now, we have a 2014 Harley-Davidson motorcycle that is being leased for $325 a month. So we've had it for a year. The majority of the lease has been paid off by a community grant that Walmart gratefully gave to us. The department is looking to purchase the motorcycle so that we can no longer have to maintain the lease and take ownership of the bicycle, I'm sorry, the motorcycle. The bike, when we purchased it, only had 1,800 miles on it, so it's almost like a brand-new bike. The bike has been used many times since we entered into the lease with other communities to provide added traffic enforcement Halifax, which has recently received the grant from the state, traffic enforcement. And the bike is gonna be mainly used for that. In addition to that, it's a great community relations tool. It allows us to respond to congested areas, like everybody was talking about how 106 gets really congested. The bike can respond there quickly, efficiently. The bike can go to areas where the cruisers can't easily respond to. It kind of builds, you know, some pride in the department, the officers have something to look forward to. The goal is to have other officers certified in the motorcycle to be able to utilize it. We currently have just one officer that's been utilizing the bike. So that's some of the reasons that I would, you know, respectfully request that the residents would approve this article.
Thank you, Chief. So the Finance Committee, you wanna explain its recommendation?
So, Mr. Moderator, when we had the conversation with the chief about the sort of lease versus current purchase, the consensus that we reached was that we'd like to see one more year of leasing before we, again, revisit this issue next year to consider purchasing the bike. This would bring the purchase price of the bike down. And as the chief said, that a lot of the lease payments have been able to be covered by grant projects or grant program receipts, which he's been able to obtain successfully. So that is the Finance Committee's recommendation. We're not against the idea of us having this vehicle or having the motorcycle, but rather, we'd like to see one more year of lease payment before we revisit this idea of purchase.
Thank you. Questions, need for discussion?
In the back.
In the back?
So, David Masiel, 16 Tenth Ave. So they're talking about a 2016 Harley-Davidson, which the value of this bike is gonna stay roughly in that area for quite a while, 10 to 12 years, as far as the bike mileage and all that increases. Public relations, we were just looking to spend $11,000 on private roads, which I know it's not something we want to bring up and talk about, but this is an asset to the town. And purchasing it over leasing it, I think, is probably gonna be the best bet. They're gonna be able to save money with this thing in the long run. The maintenance on the bike isn't as much as a full police four-wheel vehicle. So I think we should move to vote and get this done.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Hi, Rich Sanizaro, Crystal Lake Road. I was unaware of the Crystal Lake road improvements we were going on tonight, but I'd have to say kudos to the Highway Department. You do our roads twice a year, we're happy with them. Good job, Mr. Hayward. I'm in favor of the police bike. I myself have gone through the Car Web course on a motorcycle, it's not easy. The officer we have in town passed with flying colors. I've done some personal escorts with him last year. We did the Corps of Cancer Run. We did the Quinn Run, which is a mighty Quinn, who's a five-year-old kid who's got brain cancer. They have approximately 400 motorcycles. The motor officer and I guided the motorcycles safely through Quincy into Waymouth. As a recipient of this grant, this couldn't have done without it. The chief worked hard to get this. I came from a town where we had four motorcycles that I worked there. There's a lot of cases where the motorcycles can perform tight turns, dirt roads, anything with this congestion. We have the mud fest, we've got the fireworks. I'm definitely in favor of police bikes. If you ask anybody that's worked with them, they know what they're capable of. The bikes we had carried NACAN. Everybody on the bike was certified for NACAN and CPR. Many times, we were called somewhere, you couldn't get a car into for access, the bikes were there, people lived. Safety first. $14,000 for a bike that's two years old is minimal. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Thank you.
Question from the Finance Committee. We just want to clarify, because the Finance Committee was under the impression that the money to pay for this year's lease was already factored into the operating budget for the police department that we voted on in Article 4, which would mean if that is the case, then we've already appropriated the money to pay for this year's lease successfully within the police budget. So we just want a clarification either from the police department or the town administrator on that.
The money was initially put in, in my initial budget request, but because we went, because of COVID and we had to balance budget, I had to take it out. So the only funding that I have right now is through the gift account and through Walmart.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Mr. Gaynor, any indication of discussion in your room?
Yes, sir, we have one.
Summer Schmeling in Dean Path Road. Now, please don't misunderstand me, I'm fully in favor of having this motorcycle on the fleet. My question is, through you, Mr. Moderator, to the police chief, because the Finance Committee mentioned the only reason they wanted to hold off a year on purchasing was because they anticipate there may be some more grant money accessible. Could the police chief verify whether or not he believes he'll be able to pay off some of this lease through a grant before we purchase it through the town?
Try to get an answer for you, Chief.
The only grant that I might be able to get again would be the Walmart Community Grant. It was $2,000, so it doesn't pay for the entire lease for the year, which is $3,900. So it made sense to me that instead of just keep paying on the lease in two years, just, you know, buy the bike outright. So, yeah, there's no additional funding that I can see right now.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Michelle Barclay, 202 Hudson Street. I was just wondering.
You want to step in again?
Sorry. Is this a grant that he'd be able to put towards something else? If he were able to still secure that funding, would we, and then if we passed to purchase the motorcycle, would he be able to still get that grant and use it for something else? Or is this something that is exclusive to the motorcycle?
So the specific grant that he just mentioned, if the motorcycle were paid for, you're asking, could a grant be applied for, for other things?
Exactly.
Chief?
The Walmart Community Grant is basically a grant that we utilize to do community relations events in town. So if I didn't have to spend it on that, I could use it for other programs.
Thank you, Chief. Yes, ma'am.
Susan Hill, 54 Stonyware Road. I have to admit, I have never seen this bike in use. This is news to me that we even have a motorcycle. I'd like to know how often this vehicle is used, and is it used at all in the winter, when most people put their bikes away?
Try to get answers for you, ma'am. Chief?
It's not used in the winter, obviously, because of New England weather. We can't ride the bike, it's not safe to ride the bike. But I believe the only department that rides year-round is Boston. We use it, we've used it a lot this summer for what I mentioned, traffic enforcement, parades. And if, we had, unfortunately, had to send our officer to Brockton and to Wareham during the protests, peaceful demonstrations, because he's a member of the Southeastern Mass Law Enforcement Council, which allows Halifax, if we have to, to request 45 motorcycle officers for any event that we have in Halifax at no cost to the town.
Thanks again, Chief. Mr. Gaynor, any other indication of discussion there?
No, sir, no further discussion. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, one more.
Step, wait, step to the mic.
Phil Salvatore, 475 Laurel Street, Halifax. Got a question on most leases. Does the motorcycle have a mileage limit per year that it has to adhere to?
Under the lease is what you're asking? Is there a limitation of mileage? Chief, do you know that? Is there a limitation per year of what you can put on the bike?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question, please?
I think the question was, is there a mileage limitation in the lease on the motorcycle?
No, there is not.
Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Sir?
Tom Manning, 10 Second More Drive. The $14,000 seems like a reasonable amount of money for this purchase. My only problem with this is that a little earlier, I was looking at My only problem with this is that a little earlier, I was looking at the police budget. And, you know, I think it would be, again, more honest for us to consider from this point on, when you have these budgets and you put down, you should put proposal for police chief underneath the budget, which would mean like pending. And then maybe another suggestion is if you move up a little bit, we have another $100,000 for two new police cars, which I believe they need them. But these are monies that you have to look through the whole book to try to get the real budget. And up here, earlier in the book, you say, oh, this is the budget, but this isn't the budget.
So we're going to refer, I'm going to focus you on this article.
Yeah, well, I'm focusing on the $14,000, but everybody else can see the same thing on the same page that we have here. Article 22 and Article 20 involves money that's going to go to the police department. The money is, they need it. And there's not a question of do I believe they don't need it? And they deserve the two cars and they deserve the motorcycle, 100%. But when you put, when you put a final budget in the earlier part of the book and then you come back looking for more money, it looks, it looks like something's up. It's just like you don't have the courage to put that. The budget is really $2 million.
I would say let's refrain from making judgments on people's intentions. And the other side of it is, I've heard the chief indicate it was initially part of the budget, but is not part of this year's budget.
No, $3,500.
Are you, are you in favor of the article, sir?
Wait a minute. You just made a misstatement. You said that the police chief said that he changed $3,500.
No, I didn't say that.
$14,000 is not the same number.
Sir, I didn't say that. I simply said the chief indicated initially the motorcycle was in his budget, but it was taken out of his budget.
But he said the lease figure was taken out. She mentioned the lease of $3,500, and that was taken out. And then they come back with the $14,000. The initial number was the $14,000.
Right, that's the cost of purchasing the bike.
That's right. So let's not confuse $3,500 and $14,000. I've got maybe $300 in my pocket and about $2 over here, and it's not the same thing.
Mr. Moderator?
Wait, wait. Thank you, sir. Yes.
From the Finance Committee?
Finance Committee.
Just to clarify, the reason why you're going to see capital items placed in articles is because they're often funded out of a different source, which you'll see as undesignated fund balance or free cash. That's not coming from the same place that we, or the same, if you want to think about a pool of money that we use to pay the operating budget, which is raise and appropriate, which are your taxes that are levied. And the reason that we keep it separate is because once it was designated for an item in that article, you have to think about it as being sort of its own little bank account, and only that thing can be paid for with the money from that article. It can't be moved around within the department's budget, et cetera. So that money that we dedicate within that article to that item that you vote on only gets spent on that item. The reason that I wanted to clarify about the lease was because we've gone through so many revisions of the budget, given the, you know, the exigencies of the economy, that I just wanted to make sure that the Finance Committee had the most updated information as to whether or not the chief ended up putting the lease in his operating budget or not. So I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Ms. Tarsy. Appreciate the clarification. Mr. Gaynor, any other indication of discussion from you?
No, sir. No further indication.
It appears none here either, so all of those who are in favor of passing Article 22, please signify by raising your green cards high, please. All of those who are opposed to Article 22. Mr. Gaynor, what does it look like in your room, sir?
The article passes.
Article 22 here passes.
Article 7.
Article 7.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,440 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2020 between IAF-
2021.
Sorry, 21. Between IAFF Local 3159 firefighters in the town of Halifax.
It's been moved-
Second.
And seconded. Recommendation of the Finance Committee on Article 7?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends Article 7?
Mr. Moderator, this is a 1.6% increase on the firefighter's annual salary.
Any need for discussion or questions? Mr. Gaynor?
No indication for discussion.
All of those who are in favor of Article 7, please signify by raising your green cards high. Thank you. All those who are opposed, raise your red cards high. Mr. Gaynor?
Passes unanimously.
Article 7 passes.
Article 16.
Article 16.
I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $150,000 for maintenance of town roads.
Second.
Hang on. Can people hear that? Because I couldn't. Could you, I know it's tough, but stand as close as you can and speak loudly again, please.
I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated funds balance of $150,000 for maintenance of town roads.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Article 16, what's the recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends, sir, your article.
This article is something we get every year. It's only $150,000 that we try to work with. Just so everybody knows, we're going to try to go up on this this year, but with COVID, it knocked it back down.
Thank you, sir. Any indication of discussion or questions? Mr. Gaynor?
No indication for discussion.
All those who are in favor of Article 16, please signify by raising your green cards nice and high. Thank you. Any who are opposed, please raise your red cards high. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimously in favor.
Article 16 passes.
Article 20.
Article 20.
Mr. Moderator, give me a second here. Yeah.
Are you moving the article?
Mr. Garen is going to be moving the article.
All right, Mr. Garen.
Sorry for the delay. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance a youth sum of $50,000 and raise and appropriate a sum of $50,000 for a total of $100,000 to purchase and equip miscellaneous police equipment, two new police vehicles to be used for patrol.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Article 20. Recommendation of the Finance Committee on Article 20?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends Article 20.
Police chief will speak to it.
Chief?
The purpose of this request is to purchase two new police cruisers. The replacement rotation has been in effect for many years and has worked well. We have been able to maintain a maintenance cost very minimal, and the fleet remains fairly new. The investment is prudent, as we have not faced, we have not faced a very expensive maintenance cost because we rotate the vehicles, you know, throughout. Last year, we only replaced one of the frontline cruisers, so it's important to go back to the two cruiser a year. We receive bids from Ford and Dodge, both on the state bid. The Ford bid's a little lower, but we're also looking at hybrid models. The $100,000 will cover the two hybrid vehicles, but the cost in gas down the road will be significant to the town. So that's, you know, if it gets approved, that'd be our recommendation to get two of the hybrid models for the fleet.
Thank you, Chief. Any indication of discussion? Mr. Gaynor, in your room?
Negative. No indication for discussion.
Mel Conroy, 7 Birch Road. I know two years ago, this line item was $80,000 and has been for some time. I understand the increase, 25% with the hybrid models. Do we have an actual savings in dollar amount as to the fuel cost savings?
Chief?
On the hybrid models, it looks like calculations about $3,000 savings.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions?
None. Nope, all good.
I'm sorry.
Nope.
Nope.
No, okay, no, thank you. They're being kind to me, telling me no, there's no other indication. All right, all of those in favor of Article 20, please signify by raising your green cards nice and high. Thank you. All those who are opposed to Article 20, raise your red card. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Article 20 passes. Next article.
Article 37.
Article 37. I will alert you that this will require a 2/3rds vote. Article 37?
No.
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 No?
Nope.
Are you sure about that?
It's just an ex- It's not a borrowing.
I stand corrected.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer the sum of $90,000 from undesignated fund balance for the repair and replacement of the roof at Pope's Tavern, including and not limited to any architectural, engineering, project management, and construction costs.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Article 37. Recommendation of the Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends.
Mr. Moderator, this is pretty straightforward. We have a serious problem at Pope's Tavern. We've got a leaking issue that's been consistent, and we need to fix it. And unfortunately, when we started looking at it harder, we've got structural damage. So we had to get an engineer, we had to get a plan, and we're gone out to bid to see what we can get. And we believe that we can get it done for this number. Plus, we have some monies available, but we haven't got the final bids in yet.
Any need for discussion, questions? Yes, sir?
Mel Conroy, 7 Birch Road. Could you please clarify the scope? Is this a full roof replacement or is this a repair?
It's an extensive repair with a lot of replacement. I'd have to bring the plans in and show you, but it's quite the project.
Other questions? Yes.
Hi, it's Amy Troop, Ten Hill Side Off. Question, is it with the sheathing or is it actually with the post and beam structure?
It's the structural members in addition to sheathing.
Okay. And who found this structural problem if we don't have? Who was the diagnoser?
We realized we had a leak. And when we started looking at it, you could see considerable damage and rot and busted members. So then we had it professionally looked at. We had an engineer, excuse me, an architect, who looked at it and came up with a plan. I could ask Mr. Materna to speak more specifically towards it if you want specific details.
Yeah, I wanted to know who the contractor was and where we would get the $90,000 estimate from.
Do we have, I'm sorry, in the back, yes.
Scott Materna, Building Maintenance. So we had a structural engineer come out and an architect to look at the building. The struct, sorry, the architect that the structural engineer works for is Angelo, and I'm going to butcher the last name, is Kiriakides.
Kiriakides.
Yeah, I can get it to you if you need it in writing. I'm sure you do. So they came out, they looked at everything upstairs, up in the attic. So basically, we'll be stripping off all the shingling, the sheathing, and what's called purlins that go in between the main rafters. The purlins be replaced with modern lumber. The sheathing would be replaced, which is old barn board. The sheathing would be replaced with plywood, and then regular asphalt shingles on top of that.
Thank you, sir. Other questions, discussion? Mr. Gaynor, any indication of discussion?
Oh, yes, we do have one.
Jeff Bolger, Brandeis Circle. Obviously, since this is the only senior center we have, and if the roof's leaking, we've got to fix it. But I'm just kind of curious. It seems to me that every couple of years, we've appropriated money after money after money for Pope's Tavern. And I was just wondering, what's the total amount of money that was spent on design plans, construction, and so forth over, let's say, the last 20 or 30 years? Seems to me it's got to be approaching the millions at this point.
Not sure we have an answer for that, do we?
Mr. Moderator, just the millions, I'm sure, have not been appropriated simply because town meeting, ultimately, when we've looked at various options for replacing Pope's Tavern, either with a new building, with buying a pre-existing building, or expanding and renovating the current building, has turned down those plans to do so. I don't, I could not tell you right off the top of my head how much money we spent, for instance, on plans and architectural work, but I know it's not in the millions of dollars. If it was, we would have had to borrow the money to do so. It might be over $100,000 without a question, but not in the millions.
Anybody else there, Mr. Gaynor? Any other indication of discussion?
Yes, we do have one person here.
Mr. Moderator, through you, Kimberly King, 668 Plymouth Street. I know that some time ago, the Board of Selectmen had met with different individuals about possibly using the police department as the new senior center and then making a multi-department building. And I'm just curious if there is a plan moving forward to address all of the issues at the senior center, because it really needs to be done, and it really can't be on the back burner anymore. It's just my personal opinion that I'd like to see something at a May town meeting that gives the seniors in this town what they deserve.
Let's see if we can get an answer for you.
Mr. Moderator, there is. There is a building committee that was formed back the week before COVID shut everything down, and we have not had a meeting since. But our plan was to go through and do a facilities need for every building and come back and present a plan to the town. I don't see it being done for the upcoming May meeting at this point in time. I understand that everyone's concerned with Pope Tavern. At this point in time, we need to have the roof fixed, and I don't think there's really a choice about that. We would have to do that even if the senior center was moved into a different building. We still own the building. We have to repair it. That's where we are right now.
Thank you, sir. See no indication of other discussion? All those who are in favor of passing Article 37, please signify by raising your green cards high, please. Thank you. Any opposed, please raise your red cards high. Mr. Gaynor?
Unanimous in favor.
Article 37 passes. Next article.
Article 30.